At this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the St. Corey County Sheriff Deputy, Katie Leasing, who lost her life over the weekend. Thank you. I am not the president of the school board, however, I did stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, so I think I got it figured out. But I am Nick O'Leett, Superintendent of Hudson School District, called the meeting to order as we get ready to... This is the organizational meeting for the Board of Directors. So as we do the election and the officers, I will first get the election for the president. And once the president has been elected, I'll be turning over the gavel to the president. So with that being said, I guess after that, then the president will carry out for vice president, treasurer, and clerk. So with that being said, I will call three times for nominations for the first position. We'll follow the same process all the way through. The nominations will be via voice nominations. Then depending on the number of people that are nominated for any position, if there's only one person that is nominated for the position, I can call for a motion to approve the nominee by acclamation and eliminating the written ballot. If there's more than one individual that is nominated and accepts the nomination for president or any of the other offices, essentially we'll close nominations and then we go to a written ballot of the seven board members up here. And then we will pick, and it is a majority of the board. So with that being said, I would open up for nominations for president of the Hudson School District.
Nick, I'd like to nominate Jamie Johnson as president.
Okay, we have a nomination. Jamie, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
I would call again for nominations for the president of the school district, school board for the school district. In a third and final time, I will call for nominations for president of the school board for the Hudson School District. All right, hearing none, I'm going to go and close nominations. Since there is only one nomination, I would entertain a motion to approve the nominee by acclamation.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you, fellow board members, for your confidence. Now I will open the nominations for vice president.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I nominate Bob Bowman for vice president.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, so we have two nominations. That means that we will then have a secret ballot. I guess I'll move to close the nominations unless there's an objection. Right. Yeah, Bob, do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Heather, and Megan, do you accept the nomination? Okay, the majority of the board has spoken, and the vice president is Bob Bowman. Congratulations, Bob, on another term. Now I open nominations for treasurer. Molly?
I nominate Heather Logan for treasurer.
You have a nomination. Heather, do you accept the nomination? Is there any other nominations? Calling a third time for nominations for treasurer of Hudson School Board for the 23-24 school year. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to elect by acclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rob, second by Bob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Heather. Next up, I accept nominations for clerk.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Kate Garza for clerk.
Right. Kate, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Call a third time, any nominations for clerk of the school board? All right. I'm not seeing anybody reach for their microphone, so I'm going to close the nominations for clerk. I'll entertain a motion to elect by acclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rob, second by Bob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So that concludes the election of officers for another school year. And we'll move into a board school year. I guess our board year starts technically started the last meeting we had, which was a work session, but this is the first actual regular meeting, so... For recognitions, I guess we'll take them in the order suggested. So first up is National Association of Music Merchants.
Hey, we'd like to invite our partners from Schmidt Music and representatives from our wonderful music department to come up and talk about this recognition for which we are very proud.
Well, members of the board and administrators, thank you very much. Happy to be here this evening. If we haven't met, I'm Ryan McCarthy, and band director at Hudson High School. And I am thrilled to introduce to you a friend and colleague. Brent and I go way back. And this is Mr. Brent Turner from Schmidt Music.
Thank you, board and Ryan, for having me this evening. This is my third year with Schmidt Music, and this is my third opportunity to stand in front of you to commemorate and to acknowledge your school music department. We're here to celebrate 13 years of getting this award in a row. And so of the 25 years that they've been doing this award, you've got it for 13, which is an amazing testament. I'd like to thank middle school band director Sam Cutter, superintendent Dr. Nick O'Leett, along with all of our friends from the Hudson Public Schools, from all of your friends at Schmidt Music, including our owners, Tom and Doug Schmidt, along with their sons Pete and Ted, who represent the fourth and fifth generations of Schmidt Music, family management dating back to 1896. And actually, our current president, Pete Schmidt, graduated from Hudson High School. We're in the music products industry, which includes instrument companies, publishers, retailers, and everyone else involved in helping you to be able to teach your students the fine art of music. Our music products industry has a trade association called the National Association of Music Merchants, or just NAM, which was established in 1901. In 1998, NAM established their Best Communities for Music Education Award. Today, we are celebrating your 2023 Best Community for Music Education Award. This was announced less than two weeks ago, I think so. Sam was very proactive in getting us in front of the board. This represents your 13th win in a row. Bravo, and thank you for keeping this tradition rolling. In 2023, the 25th year of BCME, this program celebrates and recognizes innovative and resourceful music education programs in the United States and those schools and communities that support them. In order to apply for this award, Sam completed a 61-page survey that covers pretty much every aspect of your music education program. This survey was developed in partnership with the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. Survey questions are aligned with goals for equity and access to music education for all students and with national standards for music education. In 2023, just 830 districts earned this prestigious national award. This places your Hudson Music Department in the top 6% of the 14,000 school districts in the nation. Bravo. Sam and Doug Schmidt worked together to get your awards printed and to get all of the people that we thought might be people in your district that support music education. If you think somebody else should be included or if you have a name that's misspelled, we certainly would like you to have something that has your name perfectly put onto this so that just let me or Kai Johnson, who's your rep, or Doug Schmidt know immediately. Also, once we hand these out, we'd love to take a picture with you guys and your awards. So we would like to hand these out to you and to the music instructors that are here this evening. Thank you very much.
And while they're getting awards to hand out, Heather, did you have something to say?
I did, I did. I think it's so appropriate that you are here this evening when we have this room packed with students and staff. This is the seventh time that I've had the honor of receiving this, and it actually feels a little bit silly for us to be the ones getting these plaques because the credit for our music programs goes to the incredible staff who are in this room, to the incredible students. I know we have several... I shouldn't say I know. I think we have several students in this room who are part of our music program and broadly to our community, which continues year after year to support us being able to provide incredible music programming for our students. So I just want to say I can't think of a better time for you to be here presenting this. And on behalf of all of you, I say thank you for this recognition.
Well said, Heather. Any other board members that had anything to say on this subject? Yeah, please do. Please introduce the other staff.
Great. As I call your name, would you please come forward, staff members, so that you can be recognized? Aaron Mayer, our middle school choral director. Piper Shaw, general music at EP Rock. Mr. Jack Young, our high school orchestra director. Adam Tulkey, general music and... Just general music and orchestra? General music at Willow River. Derek Fritz, middle school band. And the procure of the application process, Mr. Sam Cutter, middle school band.
Excellent.
All right. So if we have everyone that's here, at least, if they've got their award already or they can grab somebody else's, but let's go ahead and line up. And we want the teachers included in the picture, please.
Just pick a wall.
Back row.
Could you keep on ears?
Yeah, right. Get rid of our name placards. All right.
Thank you again, folks at Schmidt Music. This is now the 11th one of these that I have, so I will replace the most recent one, and it's in my hallway at my house. But I, like Heather, I agree that we don't really feel worthy of having been with all our teachers because it's our teacher's success that makes a recognized music school. So we do appreciate their efforts. Next up, foreign exchange students. Dave?
Yep, tonight we have Lori Rosini, high school counselor, who's going to get us started with introductions of our foreign exchange students.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having us. Again, I'm Lori Rosini, and I've been coordinating exchange at the high school for about seven years. We work with any student exchange program that is accredited on a first-come, first-served basis. And Rotary, Roy Schoberg is here tonight to talk for just a few minutes, too, gets for sure two spots of our eight spots. So we usually host around eight students, and I work with them throughout the year from beginning to end. I pull them together at school regularly, supporting them with anything they might need. The same with outbound students, keep track of how they're doing. This year, we had six students come into the high school with one returning home a little early to France. That sometimes happens, they get homesick. And this, tonight we'll introduce you... After Roy talks, we'll introduce you to the kids, and they'll just share a little bit about their experience here, real briefly. But this is one of my favorite groups to date. They're polite, they're supportive of each other. They've been in sports, activities. They've made the most of this opportunity. And for the most part, they're quite sad to be leaving Hudson. They've had a great time. So again, I'll let them introduce themselves. But first, Roy Schoberg wants to say a few words about exchange on his side of things.
Thank you, Lori, and that's Lori Rosini. But I'm here representing both of the Rotary Clubs, the Noon Club, which meets every Thursday at noon, and then the Daybreak Club, which meets every Wednesday at 7:00 a.m. And it's a lot of fun, so come on down sometime. But I'm here to talk about youth exchange. So Rotary offers a number of programs. One of them is short-term youth exchange. And so this summer, we have two Kates, Kate Anderson and Kate Cantak. And Kate Anderson is heading to the small country of Liechtenstein. And the other is heading to France. So how fun is that? And then they go there for a month, and they make friends with the host sister, and then the sister comes back. And it's just a great short program and doesn't need that much involvement of Rotary or of Lori because it's in the summertime. So that's our short-term program. But we also send out one or two students away every year. And right now, we have Ella Schwabek, and she happens to be in Sweden. And then Marie Gonzalez-Moracho, and she happens to be in Denmark. And I just got their report cards, and they both said they're having a good time, and they don't want to come back. That means it's a success for us. So before we hear from the inbounds, I have another person I want to introduce, and that's Tom Peterson. Where's Tom Peterson? Come on up here, Tom. So Tom has been a host family, part of a host family for our Brazilian student, Jauhu, you'll be hearing from in a minute. But Tom was the host brother, and you're here with your dad, Dave, and Jill somewhere out there. I think they're in the other side of that wall. But they're there, and we're acknowledging them. But Tom Peterson, I'm going to ask you just a few questions. Your school, I mean, you're great in your school and where you might be going?
Yeah, so I'm Thomas Peterson, I'm a 7th grader at Hudson High School. And next year, I'll be a year-long exchange student to Japan through Rotary.
And why did you decide to do this?
I've had prior experience living abroad before. Very positive experience for me, and as well as prior knowledge in the Japanese language.
What are you looking most forward to?
I'm looking forward to experiencing new cultures. Always travel's always fun for me.
Well, it's always fun. What do you think is going to be the biggest challenge, though?
Biggest part is by far the longest time I'd ever be away from my parents. And then new culture, new language, and experience. It's going to be hard, at least for the first part.
Well, Tom did a great job with his interview. And it's kind of one of those things where one minute into the interview, you say, "Well, we have 19 more minutes to go. We've already wanted to accept you." So Tom, congratulations on being accepted, and good luck on your trip to Japan. You'll be leaving, I think, in August or so. August, yes. And then coming back in June. So with that, I'll turn it over back to Lori Rosini.
And I'll have the kids come up, and they'll just share a little bit about their time, and then we will get out of the way here.
So my name is João Silva. I'm from Assis, in the state of São Paulo, Brazil. And I'm just going to talk about school here. So my favorite course this year was AP Physics. I changed from regular physics to AP Physics in the middle of the year. My favorite teachers were Mrs. Flanagan. He teaches economics and criminal law. And Mrs. Allison, she's my physics teacher. What I have enjoyed the most about Hudson is the people. People in Hudson were really nice to me since day one, especially Rotary and the kids at school. What I'll miss the most when I leave is, I think, the school. The high school has the best structure and the best staff I've ever seen. And I think everybody here needs to know that because sometimes people don't realize how good the structure here is. So it was a pleasure to study in a place so good and so welcoming. I had involvement with varsity soccer. So during the soccer season, I came here earlier for the tryout in May varsity. I played, I was in the swimming team. Unfortunately, I had to stop because of a hip injury, but it was a good time. And just Rotary volunteering. Rotary is my organization, the organization that sponsors me here. And I was involved with most of their events and fundraisings. That's it.
Hello.
Yep, yep.
Well, I have the same question as he did, but my name is Anthony Powers. People call me Anthony. I am from Warsaw, Poland, very fine town. My favorite course was personal psychology. It's still going on, and I really love it. My favorite teacher, who teaches personal psychology, is Robert Smith. I also really like Mr. Neil Hatfield, who teaches American Studies. About Hudson, I mostly enjoyed the teachers and the very personal approach to students. I really appreciate it and the work and effort they put into their classes and making it entertaining and establishing a friendly environment. I really like it. And I will miss, what do I miss the most when I leave? Will be the teachers and all the friends and all my teammates that I've met here. I was involved in the swim and dive team, and I've met some really, really great people, coaches. Mr. Coach Ross Campbell, he's a really, really great coach. Coach Brandon. And yeah, I will really miss these guys.
All right.
So that's it.
Hello, everybody. My name is, this is quite long, Thita Ponjiraki Adigon. My nickname is Nami or Namwon, if you could, if you prefer. I'm from Nontaburi, Thailand, which is in Asia, like across the world from here. So my favorite course is symphonic band. I like symphonic band because I used to play the saxophone back in my country. And I think this chorus helped me a lot to improve my music theory and improve my playing with the saxophone. And the next course that I really like is criminal law. It's really helped me with understanding the system in the law. Sorry. And my favorite teacher is Ms. H. She's a teacher in English Grade 10. She's really helpful, she's really nice. She's one of the nicest teachers that I have ever met. And the next teacher that I... My next favorite teacher is Mr. McCarthy. He has been really helpful to me and helped me a lot with my music skills because when I first came here, I barely known a lot of music skill, and he has been helpful for the past few months. And what I have enjoyed most about Hudson is, I think it's going to be like the festival, like the hot air balloons festival. I really, I find that really interesting and really cool. And the next one will be the school. I really like the school in Hudson because I think, because the schools in Hudson, they gave you a lot of like options in career for the future, which my country barely provide. What would I miss most when I leave is, mostly would be my friends and my teacher that I made, that I meet for the past few months. They have been nothing but really helpful, really kind to me. I'm really grateful for that. And the next thing I would miss most is, some people find it strange, but it's the weather. I really like the weather here because the weather, like in America, especially in Wisconsin, has like this variety of weather, like winter, spring, fall, summer, that like it could change, like extremely fast. My country is like mostly a hot climate country, so it's mostly like 90, 100 degrees Fahrenheit, like most of the years. And what I have been involved in, the school or in the town Hudson, is the Cinderella musical, the winter musical, the spring musical. I have been in track and field team recently. And I have been in the band concert. And recently, I participated in the solo ensemble in the sax choir. And for the fibs in Hudson, I participated in the Descendants show. That's all.
Right.
Hi, my name is Alicia, and I'm from Italy. And I'm here with the program Education First. My favorite course was economics, and I did it with Mrs. Flanagan. I really enjoyed it. My favorite part of Hudson was the school, is the school and the school spirit and all the many ways that students are involved in activities after school. Like, for example, I've been in the swim team in the fall season. I qualified for the sectional. And for the forensic team, I qualified for states. And now I'm in the track team, but I've sprained my ankle, so I can't really run. And the thing I'm going to miss the most are my friends because I've met a lot of special people here. And they helped me a lot, most of all, like during the first month where maybe I was struggling making friends or, yeah. And that's it. I'm really happy to be here.
History. And my favorite teacher was Mr. Hatfield. He teaches American Studies. I have enjoyed most them meeting new peoples, like all the friends that I met. Like, they're amazing and really helpful. And I will miss the most also my friends and the like activities in school that you like offer because we don't have school sports. So it was really like fun to experience that. And I'm involved in soccer right now, the season, that's right now, girls. Choir, so we have like a lot of concerts, and I never had that. So it was really fun to experience that. And I'm also here with EF, Education First. And yeah, thanks for having me.
All right. All right. Is there any board members that had comments? Yes?
I just wanted to say that you guys are so thankful to come here, but I think what you forget is the impact that you've made on our students. I know a couple of your faces that have made amazing friends with my kids. And so it's so special. And not only are we sharing our culture, but you're doing the same for the students here. And we're so, so happy that you came.
Some of them already have friends going to visit.
Yes. That's great. Yes, and each of you talked about all the things you participated in and that that's the kind of participation spirit we try to have here at Hudson. And for you to do it in a foreign country, that's really good. And I have to ask Lorena, have you been to New Claris yet? New Claris, Wisconsin, Little Switzerland of Wisconsin? You have to go before you go back, okay? I happen to be from there, so, yeah. All right. There you go. There you go. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your participation. So next up is the National German.
Yes, thank you very much. So it's a night of amazing accomplishments and this is no exception. So I'd like to invite Beth Buckmaster and Ari Wirebaugh up to talk a little bit about, oh, I was actually gonna introduce Mike Ballard, Principal Mike Ballard, to talk a little bit about the National German, the National German exam. Amazing accomplishment with some amazing kids and amazing teachers. Mr. Ballard. Just say what I said again.
I will just say, I gotta just say, this is what a great night, right? Like to have an opportunity to celebrate all the things that are going on at their school. Awesome. But we do have two wonderful German teachers, as Mr. Granville had shared. Beth, Beth and Arianna have been just doing a fabulous job. It seems like every year they have something to celebrate, so I'm just gonna turn it over to them and let them tell a little bit about this year's accomplishments.
I'm like eight inches shorter. So I'm Beth. This is Ari. We are the German teachers at the high school. Bethany Bachen is at the middle school, so we do have the seven through twelve program. And so these amazing students here on the board, and some of them are here as well, decided for fun to take a test. They didn't have to take this test, they chose to take a test. And so we had fourteen students take this test. We had, so out of twelve thousand five hundred students in the United States took this test. Some of them are required by their schools. Once again, they just did it for fun. And so we had nine of them get gold out of sixty-eight in Wisconsin. Nine out of sixty-eight in Wisconsin. And some of them are right here.
Hi, I'm Isabel Abramovich. I placed gold in Wisconsin. I went to the ceremony this weekend for the whole thing, I guess. But it was really cool to see Hudson represented. It's a really, there's a lot of presence in Milwaukee for this program. And having Hudson be there and win so many compared to the other schools that were there was really cool. Cash prizes were awarded for the test with gold getting two hundred fifty dollars.
All right, good.
And we got a little certificate.
All right, nice.
Yeah, so they got, they get financial, they get a medal, they get recognition. It's really amazing. It's through the American Association of Teachers of German and the D help, oh, that's an acronym. But they've been, they've been very supportive and so.
Well, I was going to jump a little bit. In addition to doing this, they had a sec, or a chance for a second exam in a contest for their essays. One of our students ended up getting one out of the five awards for that for seniors continuing on.
In the United States?
In the US, so not just Wisconsin, in the whole US, one out of five, and that would be Shloek.
Hey, I'm Shloek. Yeah, so it's a pretty cool experience to like be able to do this again this year. Because last year I did this same program. It's great to like see it expand over the two years that I've been here into like something that like all people in German can like opt to do if they want to. So it was cool to like see that growth and like expansion, people like wanting to try this new opportunity to like enrich their German experience beyond the classroom. As like you can win the scholarship for the postgraduate one for seniors like I won. Or you can also win a trip to Germany or the summer, which is pretty cool. So it's really cool that we had like a really good turnout this year. We were able to like, a lot of people placed really highly in the nation. So that's cool.
And we had two as well for the undergrad that got the scholarship to go to Germany this summer. And for extenuating circumstances, they couldn't go, but for them to even get that offer is really quite amazing, so. And they had to take a second test to do that, and they did that. So they took two tests for fun.
That's right.
So we're really proud of them and so thank you guys for your support and these great kids, so.
Any comments from board members? Yeah, go ahead, Molly.
I just wanna give you props, Ms. Buckmaster, Ms. Buckmaster, I can't even speak English. Yeah, I know, first language, it's hard. My son loved you, loved German, loved the program. It is amazing. We have a really great program and he is still taking German and he is going to Germany this summer. So the impact you have, I mean, really, it's amazing. So, and congratulations to all of you. It's wonderful. We're so proud of you.
Yes, and ditto. And do you guys know where one of the most famous German-speaking villages in Wisconsin is? It happens to be New Claris. No, great job. And congratulations, Shloek. I think you've been coming to board meetings for about seven years, collecting awards. Okay, next up, now we have the annual activities recognition.
First, we're gonna go back to, we have two categories tonight for Herb Kohl. We have teachers and student awards we're gonna discuss. Principal Ballard's gonna come up and talk about students, and then we will talk about teachers after that.
Celebration continues, so can I have Ingrid and Olivia? So each year, there are one hundred Kohl Scholarship winners in the state, one hundred. And each scholarship awarded is worth ten thousand dollars. And this year, Hudson High School has two of those one hundred throughout the entire state. So the first person I'd like to introduce is Ingrid Holter. Ingrid has participated in cross-country band, orchestra, jazz band. I believe she's been NHS historian, also participated in National German Club. So she's, she's been very, very active. Her hobbies include camping, hiking, canoeing, playing and playing games, card games with your family, right? Ingrid, as this group is well aware, is going to be going off to the Naval Academy this fall to pursue a degree in chemical or chemistry or engineering, one or the other. So congratulations to Ingrid Holter on earning a ten thousand dollar Kohl Scholarship. The second student I'd like to introduce to you is Olivia Grand. Olivia joined us during the second semester of last year, just in the middle of the year, immediately immersed herself right into our school, participated in the musical, the school play, diversity club, and just, and just a number of other fun, fun activities. She also serves as the dare youth representative for the entire state of Wisconsin. Olivia enjoys spending time with friends, reading, family, and sports. She will be tending Loyola of Chicago in the fall, majoring in pre-med, in the pre-med track via biology. So congratulations to Olivia Grand, our second. My final comment would be, if you got to know either one of these two students, you'd say that their qualities as people and as good citizens even trumps their accomplishments. Great, great young, great young students. We're super proud to have it. Hudson High School. So thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, and with that, we're going to transition now to the Herb Kohl Fellowship for Teachers. And we invite Principal Jim Delune to come up and introduce two incredibly worthy recipients. He'll be talking a little bit about Samantha Peterson and Kelly Hackbarth-Miller, two amazing teachers. And he'll have more to say, but I can tell you that these are two teachers that every student that has the opportunity to cross paths with them has a better experience because of their presence at Hudson Middle School. Amazing educators.
We're all set. All right, well, I'm honored to be here tonight to present Kelly Hackbarth-Miller and Sam Peterson as twenty twenty-three Herb Kohl Education Foundation Fellows. This is a program that honors excellence and innovation and you could not find two better representatives than these two. Kelly's been a teacher leader at Hudson Middle School for the past fifteen years. From her work as a site-based team leader to mentoring initial educators, to her leadership the past several years revamping and redesigning our advisory program, Kelly's desire to seek growth and improvement for our learning community is always evident. Kelly's a driver in our redesign of our advisory period. The advisory time focuses on character traits, social skills, and academic advising. Her work has led to the creation of a curriculum for every day of the school year for each grade level. Kelly's innovation in her classroom is demonstrated by the book club unit she created. Her students work on collecting text evidence, proving claims, and synthesizing additional supplemental information as they read from a choice of novels that represent diverse groups. In addition, she has developed a project where students engage in research and write reviews on local restaurants and businesses. Students then send these reviews out to these local businesses and you'll see many of these reviews featured at local restaurants or on their social media platforms. However, if you walked into Kelly's classroom, you would see immediately that her primary goal is to provide a safe, nurturing environment where students want to be, but still holding high expectations. In Kelly's application for this fellowship, there are a couple of quotes that sum up her classroom for the students. Kelly stated, "My students need support, love, energy, excitement, and challenge." And she says, "Because if I make sure they feel loved by me, they will do what's hard for them." And that's a great summation of what Kelly provides for the students of the Hudson School District. Congratulations, Kelly Hackbarth-Miller. Sam Peterson has also been a talented teacher leader here in our district for the past thirteen years. From Sam's work as a district trainer for nonviolent crisis intervention to her work as PLC lead and special education department head, Sam's commitment to improving our systems of support and our outcomes for our students is evident at every turn. As department head, Sam supports our middle school annual goals and action plan. She collaborates with administration, curriculum specialists, and our school psychologists to lead her PLC with a focus on increasing student success. She's currently coaching others on a truly remarkable electronic tool that she created to quickly share out rates of progress for individual students on individual goals. This process is too complex to share right here, but she estimates that she spent over a hundred hours developing this system out of necessity as a response to COVID nineteen. In her classroom, Sam is a master educator. Sam sets the bar high for each and every one of her students. She creates a plan, monitors progress, and adapts her instruction. Last year, she collected baseline data on a group of seventh grade students in written language. She administered weekly writing prompts and had students chart their progress each week. Students then would set individual goals and select targeted areas for growth. At the same time, Sam was using that data to adapt her instruction to meet those targeted areas of growth. As a result of this intensive, strategic work, four of those students closed the gap. They met general education ELA standards and joined their grade-level peers for the first time since elementary school in their language arts class. In Sam's application, she states, "My life's work is to be an advocate for the people and children that everyone else has given up on or deemed bad." Sam works diligently alongside general educators, special educators, counselors, and administrators to create an environment where every individual sees value in every other individual and where students who felt success was hopeless find success. Congratulations, Sam.
Thank you for your efforts and for bringing more pride to the Hudson School District. Appreciate that. This is Teacher Appreciation Week and we had teacher recognition last week, so appreciate all those teachers. But it's great to see them get recognized in this way. So now, are we ready for the, all right, now we are ready for the annual activities awards. And so I think we have nine organizations. Aaron?
What a night. Tons of exciting things going on, activities. We did this last year for the first time. Amazing year for our clubs and organizations. So we have here tonight our competitive clubs and organizations and also the two performances we do with the Fall Musical and the Spring Play. I will let them start and do all the talking, but just one plug, what you're about to see is just tremendous. When they started adding to the slides and putting it all together, compiling it, you truly understand what all that hard work goes into creating. Each one of these groups has really special accomplishments this year, so we're here tonight for this activity.
And for our viewers that are watching, if you could indicate what the acronym stands for, that would be great.
It's actually not an acronym.
Okay.
Sorry to kinda let you guys down with that one. Not an acronym. My name's Noah LeBlanc. I serve as the vice president of DECA at Hudson.
And I'm Rachel Gerhart and I'm the president of DECA at Hudson.
We had a really good year, a lot of growth. We ended up having forty-five registered members, thirty-six of which competed. Eighteen of us went to state and seven of us, including me and Rachel, were finalists at state. So we got to go to I C D C in Orlando. And we brought eleven total people on projects and stuff as well.
This eleven people has been like the biggest amount that we've brought to the International Career Development Conference is what that acronym stands for. And that's been like the most that we know of that Hudson DECA has ever brought, so we're really proud that our chapter was able to accomplish that this year.
Yeah, and if I could just speak quickly to what it's meant to me. I joined DECA as a freshman. I've been in it for all four years and I've really, really enjoyed my time there. It's made an immense difference in the way my life has gone. I'm going to Iowa State next year for business management. A path that I'm following kinda from, from DECA and things that I've learned, so. It's taken me to Atlanta and Orlando this year, so it's been a really great experience.
I'll do the same thing. I was, I started in DECA as a sophomore, which was like kind of different just because it was online because of COVID. So last year was me and Noah's like first actual like full year in DECA through everything. And I can't speak for him, but for myself, it definitely like put my skills like in a place where I knew, like a career path that would like help my skills and that I was like useful in. And it's also like the reason why I'm going to Madison for business this upcoming year. And I'm really excited for that. And it's definitely something, like I can't imagine not doing DECA in high school. It definitely like helped me like be a speaker as well as like be confident in myself and like how I present myself.
For sure. It's been, it's been a huge part of our high school experience. We also do community service projects. This year, our biggest one was Trick or Can in the fall, which is we went out on Halloween night and essentially trick-or-treated for a can drive that we did. Yeah, so it's been a good year.
Excellent.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, hello, I'm Lexi Brunzel. I was stage manager for both the Fall Musical Cinderella and stage manager for our Spring Play, The Play That Goes Around.
And I'm Ally Jova. I acted in Cinderella as one of the stepsisters and was involved in Spring Play as Sandra, so. Red dress, kinda crazy. Fall Musical, such an incredible experience. We get so many people involved, both students, parents, and staff members. This year was an incredible year for us. We had five sold-out shows, one being super, super close. So pretty much almost sold out on all of those. We also were able to do our Princess Tea, which was super fun to get all the kiddos involved and just bring even more of that joy to the community. We had forty-eight cast members, which is huge for a musical. And then thirty-eight crew members who are all onstage helping every single show, backstage helping. It was just a great environment and tons and tons of kids involved. We also had new people joining. I know Nami, one of our exchange students, was involved in set building crew, which was an awesome, awesome thing for her. And she's even said that it was such an incredible experience. And obviously, it's just so much fun to see not only the students involved, but also the joy that it brings to all the kids and all the parents who come and just are able to experience music and live theater.
Yeah, next slide.
Okay, and then as said before, we had a crazy amount of people do both the Fall Musical and the Spring Play. During the Spring Play, we had twenty-five of both cast and crew. Hakeem, I got to lead them all. It was also just phenomenal community support. We were able to sell the most tickets we've ever sold for a Spring Play in the last nineteen years. We had a ton of parents help us, whether that was through set building or through intermission help, just helping. just helping everybody where they needed to go. We also like to highlight the incredible talent that our Hudson High School students have. It was just a phenomenal opportunity for both me and Ally to be a part of it and just get to make some amazing, amazing friendships, but also like help us in our future. I know for me, leadership was a big deal. Having to lead that many people wholly, but yes.
Yeah, for sure. And then also along with the incredible students that we have and get to highlight, we also have an incredible set of directors who help us so much. We would not be anywhere close to the performances that we're able to put on without them. I know for me, at least as an actor onstage, so many notes, so many things that challenged me as a person and also in my acting that have just helped me grow and really just set in for a foundation that I want to keep doing this for the rest of my life. I want to keep performing, and so I'm looking to go to college for music education and just help that with other, help bring that to other kids in other districts. We have so many great memories. Yeah, so thank you, everyone who came to the show. It was so nice to have everybody there, and we love the support, and then thank you all for listening.
I am FFA's president this year. As you can kind of see on our slide, we had forty-seven registered members this year, which is the most in Hudson history. As someone who joined my freshman year with a solid twelve members, it's been really cool to see it grow, even through COVID, it was growing and it still has been. And it's been an awesome experience to both develop my personal skills, my interpersonal skills, and a lot of my leadership ability. Specifically as president, I spend a lot of time actually leading and developing programs that our FFA members do. For example, for the past two years, I have been organizing volunteer work with Badland Sheepdog Trials. It has been very kind of a unique experience for, unique experience for me to be the primary and only contact between me and the people who are actually organizing the event to both organize who's going to be working where, when they're working, what they're doing, and then actually follow through and attend the event and see it all kind of come to fruition a little bit. Throughout our various different competitions, our various community events, and our various ways for members to get involved, we have really been able to show and follow through on FFA's motto of learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve, and developing leaders that are not only going to go into the agricultural community, but just really whatever path they choose in life.
Hi, my name is Eden, and I just became an FFA member in late spring last year. And something you might not know about me is that I used to be an extremely shy person. Like, I'm not talking like shy where I just wouldn't really participate in class. Like, I could barely speak another sentence to a person who I didn't even know. And this might come as a shock to you right now because I'm here publicly speaking right now. And the way that I helped overcome my fears was by finding a community, a community in agriculture, which is something I wouldn't have even known that I was interested in without the FFA. I found my community with my similar interests in helping conserve wildlife and protecting our planet. And I also got to be myself around all these new people. And I also got to explore my interests in career development and leadership development, which are skills that I'm still honing to this day over the, my incredible journey with FFA. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is John Boyler. I'm the FFA vice president this year. So FFA provides a lot of unique and cool opportunities. One of them is to earn different levels of degrees. First degree is your green hand degree. It's kind of like your introduction to FFA. Second level is your chapter degree. You have to put a little more work into it, like show that you're participating in the chapter. And I actually got the state level degree this year, which is the first since nineteen eighty-four. That requires you to have a supervised agriculture experience. And that lets students go out into the agricultural field with an expert and kind of get experience into what field you might be interested in. So I did a veterinary assistant at a little over a thousand hours, I believe, and I, FFA gave me the opportunity to get this degree. And they provide a lot of different opportunities with leadership and competitions to a lot of different members. And me and myself, from a non-agricultural background, this is really just like showing me a lot of cool stuff about agriculture in America.
Good job.
Hello, I am Logan Webster, a member of the forensics group this year, and I would like to talk about what it is. Proper to what our people think we are, we do not investigate the dead. We are a competitive speech and acting club, much more interesting. Forensics is competitions where in the start of our season, we will compete in regional events, usually happening on the weekends, which gives chances for us to win awards. Later into our season, we progress into a self-term and style, starting at sub-districts and then progressing into districts, which this year were hosted at Hudson High School. And with our ultimate goal of going to state, this club is hosted and organized by our amazing lead director, Jessica Flanagan, standing in back, along with our assistant coach, Megan Doherty. This year, our team statistics have thirty-three registered members, twenty of which were new this year. We had twenty-five competitors and twenty of which were state qualifiers. Fifteen of those got to go on our trip in Madison in April, and five of them were virtual.
Hello, my name is Olivia Nolts, and I was a captain for Forensics Systems. Last year, as a freshman, I made it to state, and I ended up earning gold, which it was great. It felt great at the time, but then the next year came around and I ran into a problem. I was scared. I was scared that this next year I wouldn't do as good. And all of these expectations that were being placed on me would just be soured. So instead of just falling down that rabbit hole, I ended up using that. My prompt this year was fear of failure. I took my negative emotions and I channeled them into something that ended up giving me the impact that I needed to go to state again this year and earn a gold again. Forensics itself is just truly a safe haven for students, and it allows a lot of kids an emotional outlet and that they especially can't find in other places. It allows students to take their hurdles and to change them into something that is meaningful, and it even allows them to share that work with other people. Forensics has an amazing community, and I'm truly grateful to be a part of it. And beyond that, it even helps us to use these skills in the future.
My name is Stella Minor. I'm the senior captain. I have participated in forensics all four years of high school and have seen for myself how useful these skills we gain are. In my AP English class, we had an assignment to write an essay and then present it in front of the class. Myself and the one other student in forensics got the best grades in the class. And we were so comfortable that the other students noticed and asked us, "How did you present so well? I mean, you spoke so clearly. How were you not nervous?" Our answer? Forensics. The challenges we face in competitions give us the skills, the confidence, and the experience we need to face real-world adult situations. I would not be able to do as well in job interviews, auditions, or school board meetings if it wasn't for this wonderful club.
Okay, my name is Isabella Black, and I am president of this year's HOSA chapter. And then?
I'm John Boyler. I'm the vice president.
So basically, this year, we've worked really hard to push a more organized group. And by that, we have created a president and then three vice president roles so that we could help members within our group to better like access things for competition, which really helped when we went to state this year. And then we are really excited to, because all of our leadership roles are seniors right now, so we need to make sure that we promote like the juniors and sophomores that are going to be taking this club like a step further and hopefully that they will be able to like push it to be better than it is now. Yeah.
Yeah. Just off that, we had about twenty members compete at the state level for this organization. And at that state level, members are exposed to the HOSA State Leadership Conference, and that is really hoping to build the next generation of leaders and hopefully build the next generation of executive council for the Hudson Board. And I was able to qualify for the international. I've competed in this for veterinary science. I've competed two years. This year, I didn't do a whole lot for, within the HOSA ground bodies, so was able to do well. HOSA's really shown a lot of our senior members who are going into the medical field education kind of what path they want to choose, and it also get like emerges them into like life scenarios of, would you enjoy this? This might be great for you, stuff like that. So HOSA is really about just providing the opportunity for people to get experience about the medical fields that are there and what they might enjoy.
Yeah, and so I would like to expand on that. I'm going into psychology, and then we could, Abby couldn't make it, but she's going to pre-chiropractic and then?
Yeah, so we have like huge lists. We have pre-vet myself, pre-chiropractic, pre-psych, pre-dental, and many more. The HOSA organization itself provides, I want to say about sixty different events that members can compete in. So there's a wide variety, even from the financial side and business marketing side of healthcare.
Thank you.
It might just be me. I'm Graham Close. I've been participating in Quiz Bowl for three years now. This is my third year. This is our third year qualifying for the Nationals competition, too. This is the biggest group we've had in many years since before I was here. We've got quite a few juniors and sophomores that are in leadership in the club now. If you don't know what Quiz Bowl is, it's kind of like a competitive trivia game. You're on a team of four. You're facing another team of four, trying to answer kind of general knowledge trivia questions. So we did really well this year. Qualified for Nationals really early on. We're going in two weeks or so to Atlanta, flying down for Nationals. Yeah. Oh, our coaches are Roberta Naik, who teaches science at the high school, and Kristen Boris, who teaches history, government at the high school. They've helped us a lot. Miss Boris is brand-new this year to coaching, but she's, she's helped us a lot in kind of widening the scope of what we're learning in our practices. Yeah.
Hi, we're here with Science Olympiad. My name is Jack. That's Graham. This is Gabby, and that's Emily. And we're going to be the captains of the team next year. Science Olympiad is a science team that goes and competes around the state in various science activities. And although I've found my things with more stereotypical sciences like chemistry and physics, it provides a variety of things, including engineering, medical fields, math, and all your regular sciences. This is coached by Mr. Plubiac and Ms. Gering, and they're both wonderful. They create an amazing environment that's inclusive to everyone. No matter like how good you are at science, it's just amazing and really fun to be there. I've been doing this since my freshman year. And up until this year, it's kind of been like a more of an individual thing. And this year, our team has been able to really compete, so.
Yeah, this is our fifth year as a program here at the high school. This is our, this next season will be our first season with captains. This is one of the first couple of years we've, we've qualified two teams to state. We had like forty, forty-five members throughout the year. We brought thirty-two members to state, compared to like seventeen last year roughly. We got third place at all of our like invitationals and our regionals, so in River Falls, Boysville, and Menominee. And then we got sixth in Milwaukee, compared to tenth last year. Our team has had a lot of growth this year, both in like numbers, how much we're working together, how much, how well we do in our events.
So I've been doing Science Olympiad since sixth grade. And the coolest thing for me has been to see the growth that the program has had, both in the middle school and in the high school level. Because I think when I started in the high school level, we had maybe fifteen kids?
Probably had eight kids consistently came.
Yep. But the other thing that's been really cool to see, like Graham mentioned, was the growth in teamwork. I know our team, the varsity team, has really come together as a group, but I've also seen incredible growth amongst our freshmen. And I know that this kind of event helps people become student leaders, and I see that in our freshmen and each other, that they're able to work as a team, they're able to support each other. And these are like skills that you're able to take on to college and to whatever you might do, whether it's science-related or anything else that that may be.
Alright, so for me, Science Olympiad is a way for me to learn everything I want to before, such as my events are robotics-based a lot and a lot of engineering-type things. So I'm really interested in that. And at the high school, those are mainly like classes you could take as an upperclassman. But as a sophomore, being able to learn that through Science Olympiad has been really helpful to me, and it's really fun to compete in all those events. Thank you.
Having us, I know people not familiar with some of these organizations. There is an entire school day after that last bell rings and tons of awesome things happening in each of these classrooms, gyms, rooms, traveling all over, competing, just like many of the sports that oftentimes have that spotlight or that stadium or that gym. The number-one thing I took away from this, after you kind of break down all the accolades, is each one of them said higher numbers, growth, inclusion. And to me, when you put great kids with great interests together with awesome staff, advisors, coaches, that stuff happens. So thank you for giving us that opportunity. One more round of applause for this group.
Any comments by board members?
Mr. President? You know, and Mr. Mo, and I'm just going to build off what you said. You know, academically, these kids, if you will, have day jobs. And then they spend the time above and beyond, and many of them not only in one club or what have you, but they're doing multiple things and maintaining their great points. I mean, it, it is, has always been amazing to me, the success and the, just the things that you do as, as young adults. You do more than most adults do. You've had more success than most adults do, so great foundation. And I hope you guys continue to build off these experiences throughout your lives.
Anybody else? Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for their participation. It's great to see that, you know, we've got all this interest across lots of different fields and people developing that. That's what you should be doing when you're in middle school and going into high school is, you know, looking for things that you might be interested in, not just get pigeonholed into one area. But I really like to see the growth in the numbers and the excellence. It doesn't surprise me that where we are compared to, you know, other schools, you know, throughout the state. So just great job and keep up the great work. All right, last but not least is the cheers for peers.
Yeah, after all that.
You got plenty of water?
I have, I've been taking some drinks leading up to this. I could take lessons from all the high school speakers, though, I think.
Didn't they do great?
They did fantastic. But I have cheers for peers. This is the last one of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We're kind of doing it every couple of months. We have twelve people recognized tonight, so yeah, I have quite a few to get through. But so excited to do this, and we have great fun celebrating in them as we give them their awards, as well as a basket of fun things and just highlighting the individuals that we don't always celebrate is a fantastic thing. So I will kick it off. Big breath. Congratulations to Betsy Gantz. She's our first one. She's a district's facility scheduling specialist and has been with the district for seventeen years. She was nominated by Michelle Hagan. I would like to recognize Betsy for her dedication to coordinating shared spaces. It takes a lot of skill to be able to make sure spaces are shared equitably. There are more groups looking for space than most people realize. She has a quick sense of humor and a special way to negotiate with and validate how people may be feeling when space is limited. This is challenging work as she is sometimes not able to give people what they want or need. She handles this work with professionalism and grace. She is a dedicated and positive employee to work with. Next up is Tammy Laxon. She is a deaf and hard-of-hearing paraprofessional and has been with the Next up is Tammy Laxson. She is a deaf and hard of hearing paraprofessional and has been with the district for three years and she was nominated by Shannon Swenson. Capable, reliable, cooperative, hardworking and resourceful are just a few adjectives, adjectives that I would use to describe Tammy. I work closely with Tammy and I don't know what I would do without her. We have twenty-nine students in our DHH program district wide, ages four through eighteen. Tammy has developed a relationship with all of the DHH students and is able to keep them on task when working with them. She's a self-starter. She sees what needs to be done and does it without having to be asked. Tammy has taken assigned class after hours to better communicate with our deaf students. Tammy not only benefits the DHH program, but she's an asset to Hudson School District. Up next is Lori Head. She is an instructional coach at EP Rock and Willow River and has been with the district in both teaching and now as instructional coach for fourteen years. And she was nominated by Heidi Schuman. Lori goes above and beyond to help teachers feel cared for, valued and supported. Lori is continuously noticing the positive that classroom teachers do in their classes and is always highlighting them. Lori is always willing to help teachers in whatever way they need and does it in a positive and approachable manner. Lori is a positive asset to EP Rock. I'm sure she does the same in her other building. She is constantly checking in on teachers and helping teachers feel confident in their work. Then we have Kim Banky. She's an English teacher at the high school and has been with the district for seventeen years and she was nominated by Amber Hargreaves Meyer and Anonymous. I am nominating Kim because she's a teacher, coworker and involved employee that goes above and beyond as a mentor. She is always willing to answer my questions and continues to help me grow as an educator. Kim has been co-advising prom for seventeen years and truly makes it look easy with her can-do attitude. I think it is wonder, she is a wonderful cheers for peers candidate because she continues to make Hudson a wonderful place to work. Her seventeen-year dedication to the prom and working through the difficulty of this year's prom issues, payment system not working and then the change of venue due to selling out. Then we have Kristen Clemmons. She's a tech best, technology specialist at the high school and has been with the district for twenty-one years and she was nominated by Ryan De La Croix. When you need help with your tech, Kristen is the one you go to. She always has a smile on her face and does everything she can to get you and the tech back up and running. Even if the problem seems small, she will figure it out with a smile and usually a laugh or giggle for you. Always a bonus when visiting with Kristen. Hudson is extremely fortunate to have Kristen on the team and no one can compete. Then we have Paula Monical. She's a special ed teacher at the middle school and has been at the district for thirteen years, but this is her first year as a teacher in the district and she was nominated by Ann Kelslo. Uh, Paula's passion for student learning is awe inspiring. She was always looking for ways to help all students excel. Whether it's researching and preparing curriculum for reading, math, or being present for a student that needs extra support or encouragement. Paula gives her all to every situation she is faced with. I'm honored to work side by side with Paula. Being a first year teacher, she has previously been in a para, uh, has not stopped her from making it look easy. I'm confident she works many late nights and weekends to teach to this level of student achievement. Then we have Jackie Panning. She's a health assistant at Prairie and has been with the district for five years. She was nominated by Jody Youngman and Joe Banky. Jackie takes great care of all of us, not just the students. She knows about my disability and goes out of her way to help me out when she can. She walks with me to my vehicle when it's slippery and has even brushed off the snow for me. She's extremely thoughtful. Jackie has a great sense of humor and is willing to step in and help, help out above and beyond her job description. She provides students with great care as well as holding high expectations with staff and families and communicating the ebb and flow of students visiting her daily. Then we have a duo. We have Chris Hanlon and Jody Tim. They are both administrative assistants, um, for the district at North Hudson. They are nominated by a coworker. Chris and Jody make the office at North Hudson a very warm and welcoming place for students and families alike. All who enter the office are greeted with a smile. There isn't a more inviting way to be greeted than by these two amazing ladies. Their caring disposition brings comfort to students, their families and staff members who enter the office with a question or a need. Chris and Jody do so much to make our school run smoothly, from the upfront welcome to the nitty gritty paperwork and everything in between. North Hudson is lucky to have this incredible pair. Then we have Karen Olson. She's a school age caregiver at River Crest and has been with the district for five years and was now nominated by Kelly Door. Kelly is just a great asset to our school age care team. She makes great connections with the kids and makes them feel welcome. She shows a genuine interest in their life, asking questions about their different events, athletics, family. While I was absent, she did a great job of helping to ensure that our routines and my, and daily activities were not disrupted by her absence. Karen and I have worked together before during summer and over non-school days, but this has been the first time we have worked an entire school year and she's been very welcoming to me in my new school. We are able to embrace each other's ideas and to make sure that everything we do is in the best interest of the kids and our program. Anna Lundall. She's a counselor at River Crest and has been with the district in that position for three years and was named, nominated by Kate Barch. I'm getting a little lightheaded. Sorry. Keep going. Big breath. Okay. Anna is an incredible asset to our school community. The nature of her job requires her to wear many hats and to balance numerous responsibilities with our students, families and staff. Anna is loved by our students for her caring and positive energy. Anna is loved by our families for her willingness to help them as they help their, as they help their children. Anna is loved by our staff for always being confident and competent in helping us through a challenging situation. Thank you, Anna, for all you do for all of us. And then we have Sarah Brockmeyer. She's a fourth grade teacher at Willow River and has been with the district for four years and was nominated by Daisy Stengel. Sarah has been the most supportive mentor to me during my first year of teaching. I feel comfortable going to her with any question at any time. Each day I feel as though I'm learning so many valuable things from her. She encourages and welcomes my ideas. She is organized, patient, collaborative, kind and someone I will continue to look up to as a teacher and friend. I will always be grateful to have had such a great role model my first year of teaching. The end. So congratulations to all of our cheers for peers winners.
Outstanding. Congratulations to all our winners for the cheers for peers. And, uh, so next up, we have citizens request to speak about non-agenda items. We have looks like roughly nine or ten. I'm just looking here. So what we're going to do is, uh, I guess we'll go with, uh, a two-minute, um, uh, limit if we can. Uh, and, uh, Carter Close of Hudson wants to speak about the removal of the position in the band, band department.
Hi, my name is Carter Close and I'm a current senior at Hudson High School. I am extremely involved in the music program. I play violin and clarinet in their respective ensembles and I was in marching band for all four years, including a leadership position my last year. In speaking today, I represent an extremely large number of former, present and future students of the band program in response to the news that Mr. Nick Simon, one of the two band directors in the high school, has not been offered a full-time position back for next year. While I understand that the district needs to make cuts in order to align with the budget for next school year, removing teachers without consulting the departments of their, of those teachers is incredibly wrong. Enrollment in the overall high school has decreased, yes, but enrollment in the band program has maintained numbers and is actually projected to significantly increase with the next year's incoming sixth graders. Removing a full-time teacher at the high school will have a direct impact on the success of the band program, including teachers, students and parents. Without a second full-time teacher, lessons which are crucial to in, individual improvement are at jeopardy of being reduced or cut in some form. One teacher cannot reasonably handle over two hundred individual lessons while also trying to run a minimum of three different ensembles at the same time. One teacher cannot reasonably handle mul, running multiple different extracurricular ensembles, including jazz, marching band and the pit orchestra for the fall musical while also trying to balance everything I've already mentioned. If the people in charge of the teacher cuts had consulted with the music department and other departments in the high school, this would not be an issue. This is my problem. The district provided no transparency to teachers, nor did they correctly and fairly assess all places to make the appropriate cuts. The district does not communicate with teachers nor with students and parents, and this is an ongoing problem specifically with the band program. Between stepping over the band and acting like we do not matter when compared to sports teams and this failure to communicate, the band program will suffer in coming years and to let it suffer is wrong in every way, especially after we were just awarded for the thirteenth year in a row for music education. We will not stand by these issues. I sincerely hope that everyone present today notes this and will recognize this and try and improve this problem and make it so that this does not happen in the future or currently. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Close. Next up is Gabby Sessina, Hudson Band Program.
Hi, my name is Gabby Sessina and I'm a junior in the high school. Um, I'm involved in both the band and the choir program and I'm also drum major of this year's Hudson High School marching band. So I know that there's many people speaking today on, um, the result of losing Mr. Simon and the impact that will have on us. But I also wanted to talk about a specific ongoing problem that I know Carter mentioned and that is kind of the treatment or the perception of the treatment of the band. And so in regards to the marching band, there have been several instances in which we have been kicked off of fields or practice spaces that we have reserved um, by other groups and by administration. And I think that this is, it just doesn't sit right. Um, having to give priority to other groups because of this. There were also times, um, during last season of the marching band in which there were miscommunications between administration and our band. That resulted in things having to get cut short and once again, the band having to miss out on time. Um, and I know that we were given a personalized apology, which was greatly appreciated. But part of that was a promise to do better in the future and continue to support this amazing band program that we have. And I haven't necessarily seen these promises followed through in light of, you know, the recent developments. Um, and I would like to acknowledge however, that the administration, um, has supported the band. I do see Mr. Ballard at every band and every choir concert and just know that that is greatly appreciated and that it does not go unnoticed. So the Hudson marching band and music program in general is truly incredible. Like I said, not only have we won multiple state awards for our music education, um, but I've also heard firsthand from numerous people that this is what got them through high school and this is the reason that they're still here today. And I would hate to see changes and cuts to the music program, um, take away from this music education and causes to regress. So I guess in summary, the question that I posed to you all and hope you'll consider, um, is how you'll support the band program moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Next up is Andy Mergandall of, um, Hudson. Also talking about Nick Simon.
Yes, my name is Paulette Mergandall and first of all, congratulations on thirteen years straight. That is not amazing to me because my kids both went through the program. So it's, it's not a surprising thing to me at all. I am here again, same as these guys, to discuss the cut of Nick Simon, um, at least his full-time position. Um, uh, I, my daughter Esme wrote a letter to the administration and, um, I would thank you for meeting with her today. She did get the explanation of the numbers, uh, cleared up for her. I am a leader of a project management team for a company in Minneapolis that does millions of dollars a year in business. I understand the numbers. I really do. However, I also understand that usually it is creative problem solving that brings those projects home and gets them out the door. So I would challenge all of you to kind of look at this system again and say, is it the numbers? What, how do we add value to what somebody does every day? It can't just be the numbers. On that note, my, my, my daughter Esme couldn't be here tonight. She actually had her clarinet juries, um, so her final exam and her performance for the clarinet studio at the University of Minnesota. I'm going to read just a couple of parts of her letter for you, um, so that she can feel like her voice was heard here. First of all, she does list some of her accomplishments, which are many. She joined just about every ensemble she could there. And she flew through the year with flying colors. And she says, none of these accomplishments would have been possible without Nick Simon, Ryan McCarthy and the band program at Hudson High School and Middle School. I did not grow up in a family of musicians, nor did I take private music lessons as a kid. My love of studying music is solely attributed to the amazing music teachers in Hudson and the programs they have put so much into. Mr. Simon was an incredibly influential teacher for me all four years of high school and I cannot describe how much I learned from him at that time. He has an unending amount of enthusiasm for music as well as a knowledge and interest in a huge range of music topics. He also cares so much about all students and helps create a band department where students feel supported and have a community that they might struggle to find in other parts, parts of the high school. And yet, and beyond just band class, the extra programs that Mr. Simon teaches are just as valuable, if not more, for students. His jazz ensembles, music theory classes, improvisation ensemble were indescribably important to me in high school. And I saw how much was also true for other students. I know I'm not alone in saying Mr. Simon is one of my favorite teachers to this day. And I have no idea where I would be or what I would be doing if I had not had the opportunity to have him as a teacher. I know that Hudson School District prides itself on providing students with a quality education and striving to serve the students and the community to the best of their ability. There is no one who exemplifies this better than Nick Simon and the current high school band department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Kristen Ford. It's Kristen Ford here.
Thank you for letting me speak. Um, my name is Kristen Ford and I am vice president of the marching band parent group. And, um, all three of my children are involved in the music departments between the middle school and the high school. Um, my daughter Megan graduated last year and she is now a trumpet major for performance at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Um, I could go into all the things that everybody has said, but one thing I do want to point out is that the irony of the accolades that the music department received tonight do not go lost on any of us here. Top six percent, top six percent. That's a number that you need to remember. Maybe not all the numbers that you have to crunch for this position, but top six percent. Um, some of the things that, uh, this music department, um, is responsible for is getting your kids ready for post-secondary education, which I know is important to all of you. One of the classes that they offer is AP music theory. It is a very new class. It is a class that was encouraged to be taught by the administration and Mr. Simon taught it. Um, it's a young class and hopefully would gain traction over the years. But with a one point five music teacher position, I don't know if that class will exist. The jazz band, so important. Will it still exist? Yes, it will, but it won't look the same. There's an after school and an in-school one. The band has gone through hardships in the last few years, COVID. They couldn't even play their instruments for a year and a half. Now they have to do the block scheduling, which is, is going through growth and it will eventually normalize. But they still have hardships because of it, both in enrollment and the fact that they don't meet every day. Lessons. Hundreds of students need to learn lessons. Musicians learn by lessons. Those will be negatively impacted. Mr. Simon is a wonderful teacher. He listens. The community that Mr. Simon and Mr. McCarthy have created is unbelievable for these students and it would just be a shame if you dismantled it because if you do reduce this position to one point five, you will cut the music department to the quick. Not to mention the fact that the middle school has been having a high turnover for the last few years. These kids need normalizing. They need to know that what they love is important and what they love is music. What we love is music. So please support them. Please, please find the creative solutions and please do not cut this position to one point five. It's a two-person job. It's a great job. Thank you.
Paulette Mergandall. Paulette Mergandall. Well, somebody, I guess you don't get to talk twice. So, alright, Katie Thorson.
Hello, I am a parent of a Hudson graduate from the class of twenty twenty-two, a current senior and a freshman. I'm here this evening to support both my students, the students who are current band members and those future students who have not yet had the same experience or will not have the same experience in high school and music as my children have loved because of the decision to cut one of our band directors, Mr. Simon. Both my older kids are former and current students of Mr. Simon and both have been very lucky to have learned from him. So much so that my son decided to pursue his passion for music in college and is studying to become a music educator at UW O'Clare. The Hudson High School Band Department is exceptional and has had a huge impact on my child, my child's path forward in music education. Both of my older students have loved Mr. Simon's AP music theory course and my son went on to take an independent mu, uh, independent study in music theory with Mr. Simon. Besides band, he also participated in jazz, improvised and loved every second. This, the band department becomes a second family for many students, including mine. And Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Simon are a phenomenal team of educators for the bands. Cutting opportunities and experiences for our current and future students will have a negative impact on their educational experiences. This is a program that for many students becomes a highlight of their day and their reason to, for being here, as it was for my student. Please reconsider cuts being made to our band and music programming and protect these impactful educators and programs for all of our students. Thanks.
Then we have, um, I'm sorry, is it Maya or Mia O'Connell talking about DEI training for students and staff?
Uh, hello, my name is Maya O'Connell and I'm a senior at Hudson High School. Based on my experience at the school district since kindergarten, I've had many instances where teachers have not acted respectfully or addressed racial issues appropriately. A Hudson, as Hudson continues to grow and become more racially diverse, it's important that the school district continue to learn and grow in regards to diversity, equity and inclusion, inclusion. it's important that the school district continue to learn and grow in regards to diversity, equity and inclusion or DEI as well. I have been regarded as a high achieving and successful HHS student. Per high school counselor, I am widely respected, well-liked, homecoming queen, peer helper and one of the best leaders in our senior class. Yet my experience at HHS and in the community has been painful. Think of the students in these more marginalized groups that don't have my strength, confidence, resilience and that don't have the family support that I have. There was one specific incident that happened this year during class where a blatant racist action happened. The teacher froze up and did not address it during class or after class. In this situation, I had to be the bigger person and report the incident. Whereas it should have been the teacher reporting the incident and making sure I am okay as a student. After addressing the issue with the teacher and the counselor, they admitted that Hudson is lacking teaching teachers on DEI issues and training. Individuals and organizations can endure, grow and change, but it doesn't happen overnight. Diversity, Equity and Social Justice work is about creating community, which involves building trust through careful listening, respectful disagreement and taking risks. Every person is capable of moving equity and diversity forward and is always about social identities and personal values. A quote by Catherine W. Phillips, Scientific American on October 1st, 2014 states, "Being around people who are different from us make us more creative, more diligent and hardworking," end quote. Decades of research by organizational scientists, psychologists, sociologists and economists show that socially diverse groups regarding race, gender and sexual orientation are more innovative than homogeneous groups. Simply interacting with individuals who are different forces group members to prepare better, to anticipate alternative viewpoints and to expect that reaching consensus will take effort. I wish I had more time to share more information about this very important work. I hope that the school board takes its issue seriously and provides training for teachers, admin and students. As well create a better future for minority children going through the Hudson School District. I hope that it gets better. Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you. Erica Datweiler. Who wants to speak on special education? All right, then that concludes our public input. Thank you for your comments. All right, next up is reports and this is on the post referendum survey, reminder.
Yeah, just a reminder for everybody out there that we do have the post referendum survey. I believe it hits going out today, is that right Tracy, do you know? Is one of the actual hit mailboxes. We did send it out electronically, I believe to parents and staff, been able to fill it out electronically. But the survey has is set up so you can't fill it out over and over and over again. But just wanted to touch base on that. Remember it's hitting on different things from, it's, you know, hate to use the term, you know, it's more of a follow-up survey due to failed referendum of the two referendums. And so I think, you know, the big thing is it's going to ask questions of people if they did vote no in the last referendum, the operational referendum. Why did they choose to vote no? And then I think the other piece is also pertaining to if we do need to make adjustments to our budget, where would people like to see us start those or focus our efforts and energy in making reductions to the budget? And so those questions are on there as well. Up here on the screen, this is something we've kind of, we show you guys every, about every meeting now for about the next four or five meetings. We start talking about class sizes and class size guidelines. The reason we always put this up here is because I think there's been some things out on social media related to the operational survey that we've started cutting as it relates to the budget. The, any reductions we've made in staffing to this point have been related by, related to enrollment. What you see up there are the projected class sizes for next year at the elementary level. It is a reduction, Andrew, is that two sections? Three sections from where we are this year, just to give you some perspective on those things. So, you know, there's anything that's in green is under our class size guidelines. Anything that is in red is pushing above our class size guidelines and then everything within white is is our current guidelines. So there's currently three, three grades or three buildings with a grade in them that do push slightly above our class size guidelines. And again, their guidelines are not caps, but I just wanted to, the reason I wanted to bring this up is, you know, I think a lot of people feel like we've been cutting the budget. We haven't started any of the process related to cutting budget related to the referendum not passing. This has really been something that we've done for years. It's just a product of our enrollment. The middle school, we've cut positions, the high school, we've cut positions. Elementary, obviously, we've cut quite a few positions and everything is based on, based on enrollment numbers as we look at it. But I just wanted to make sure we put this up here. We'll continue to put it in front of the board every meeting as our updated numbers. So you guys can kind of see where we're allocating sections and what that, what that looks like. Just to give you some perspective, right now there's 2,078 students in our elementary buildings and on this sheet right now, signed up, ready to go for next year, confirmed, we have 2,017 students signed up for elementary school. So that's an actual reduction of about 61 fewer students in the elementary than what we currently have this year. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, I think we're down roughly 350 elementary kids in the last eight, eight years, nine years. So that bubble is kind of working its way through the middle school, it's working its way through the high school. But that's why we have some of the conversations around the operational referendum, the operational survey and also looking at where areas, what are areas you'd like to see us make some adjustments? If we aren't able to continue to move forward with an operational referendum, they can cover all those costs, so. Any questions, this isn't really a discussion item, but more of a report. So just reminding people that survey will be open, I think, for three weeks. They'll be able to fill the survey out and then we'll get information related to the results to the board this summer and that'll help guide the discussion and direction this fall as we move forward with, with the referendum, potential referendums or not referendums, so.
Any question regarding the superintendent's report? All right, hearing none, then we move on to the action agenda portion and this would be the consent agenda. Would entertain a motion regarding the spending language.
Mr. President. Move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,796,421.88.
Is there a second? Motion by Rob, second by Heather. Any, I guess it doesn't call for any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is approved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Some retirements I wanted to call attention to. We did celebrate them last week at the recognition banquet, three of them, but I wanted to talk about them at the board meeting tonight. First up is Terry Poding, Administrative Assistant to the Principal at Hudson Prairie, 13 years of service in the district. Lori Finnegan is new in duty and different roles as well. But at Hudson Prairie as well, 22 years of service. Janelle McGee is a health assistant at the middle school, 31 years of service. And the most recent one came in today is Ben Zinger, custodian at the Hudson Prairie. It's been a few different buildings, I know he was at the high school as well. So that might be a typo because I think he's been at the high school. Years of service is seven years, so want to congratulate all of them on their time here.
Yes, congratulations and thank you for your service. Right, next up then we have, under action is resolution authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of the bonds from the referendum.
Yep, and so we'll bring Brian Brewer up here from Baird to kind of explain the presentation, talking about, you bet Brian. And he's going to kind of run through the whole financing as it relates to the sale of bonds for the referendum that passed. So I'll turn it over to Brian.
Good evening. Good to see everyone. Congratulations on, you know, success on your capital question and, you know, the work to be done on the operational decisions in the future. Tonight, this is, there are two action items in front of you that effectively position the district to procure the funding for the project account and, you know, begin investing those funds for the, during the duration of the construction period. And then the second resolution is to delegate to the president and clerk the final approving parameters such that when Nick, Bonnie, Tracy and I get the paperwork done with the credit rating agencies and you're ready to access the market, you know, as long as those parameters within that resolution are met, we can, we can have daily flexibility for finalizing the 20-year financing rate. So that's kind of the, the discussion items in action tonight. So if we flip to, go ahead and go to the next one, please. So this is, for those of you that have been on the board for a number of years, this is the chart I show each time I'm here. This is a, the bottom portion of this chart is the 30-year history of tax-exempt municipal bond rates. So it just shows a general movement in borrowing interest rates. The far right, you'll see there was a peak and it doesn't show as well in the upper box, but that's a one-year visual. So the top of that upper box is the, basically the highest rates have been since like 2013 or so. That represented effectively the last time I was here, which was late October. So it hit that peak that first week in November and then throughout the last five, five or six months, rates have moved lower, which is very favorable for what you're looking to do here. So at that time, we were using a 4.75% long-term borrowing rate. So I'll show you some illustrations. Currently, we're closer to 4%, which will help you to reduce the interest cost related to the repayment. The other thing, the other thing I'll point out there is that because rates have come back down, if you look over to 2017 and 2016, kind of where that is roughly in the, in the history of this chart, you know, your, your borrowing costs have actually come back closer to where you finalized the high school referendum from 2016 and 17. So very favorable that rates have moved back lower. So on the left side of the page here, the, the goals are to meet or beat the mill rate estimate of 16 cents for the, for the debt service payments. Minimize the total interest cost. Minimize your interest rate risk, which, you know, means locking in that long-term financing as quickly as we know that we can meet or beat those estimates. And then maximize your investment earnings, which is the, the funds that will go into the project account on June 5th. Pending your approval this evening, you, you then can invest those funds during the construction period. On the right side, this is what we are currently working on. We met today to talk through the credit rating questions. As a reminder for the board, the district's credit rating, which is very similar to our own personal credit score in our individual budgets. The, the school district also receives a credit score and, and the last time the district sought this was in 2017 and that was a double A1. So for Moody's Investor Service, which is one of the third-party rating agencies, credit rating agencies, that is one notch off of their highest. So triple A, then double A1 is the, is the next highest. So our preparation for this credit rating evaluation is to position the trends in the financial planning that the board does month in and month out, your, your budget results, your actual results, you know, basically highlighting what you've been doing since the last time they took a close look at, at the district and, and maintain that double A1 credit rating because that helps you to sell bonds, your, your bonds to more investors, which then drives down the interest rates on the borrowing. So from our planning, we are using a 20-year repayment period. The majority of the principal repayment will be, a portion of it will be right away and then the remainder of it will be after the high school debt is paid off. So from 2037 to 2043. So the way we're going to do that is the two actions you have tonight. One is a bond anticipation note or the acronym is a BAN. That is a short-term construction funding, so it's a six-month note rate and it's prepayable within three months. That, the plan will be to prepay it in three months using a combination of the funds you levied this, this cycle, 2223, for debt repayment. So we're going to effectively pay off 5 million of the 29 million before you ever borrow it long-term, which is part of the original planning process and positioning the district in the 2223 budget to be able to minimize interest costs related to the financing. And then the remainder, we, we will structure as the majority being repaid after the final payment on the 2016 referendum. So from 2037 to 2043. As a reminder, property valuation growth, we've been, we've been conservative in all of our referendum communications dating back to the 2016. I've been accused of maybe being too conservative with those estimates before. But by doing that, that allows you to come in better than the projections and allows you to pay down the debt and reduce the interest costs, which is one of our goals is to minimize the, the total interest cost during the repayment. So we were using 3% for five years and 1% thereafter. The district has averaged 6.75 over the last five years. And including last year, it was a 16% growth in the property values. So if we can flip to the next page, please. So I left this one up here, I'll only briefly talk about, this was the pre-referendum estimate. So the far left are the remaining payments related to the 2016 referendum. The phase one is the $29 million bond anticipation note. And then the phase two is the $23,605,000 long-term bond issue where the majority of the principal is paid off from 2037 to 2043. Ultimately, we used a 4.75% interest estimate, which approximated at about 18.7 million of interest on, on that long-term financing. So I left that there as a comparison for the next page where it looks very similar. The difference is we have the borrowing rate for the BAN, the, tonight for your consideration, the final rate is a 4.02. That's an all-in borrowing rate for that six-month note. For the phase two, the estimate we're using is long-term rate of a 4.37. And I was explaining earlier to Bonnie and Tracy, in that rate, we have a, we have a quarter of a point of planning cushion in there because rates will continue to fluctuate every day until we finalize. So the 4.37 is the illustration here, but if we were able to lock it in today, it would be closer to a 4.1. So versus your 4.75 that you estimated during the referendum, we're currently about 60, 65 basis points lower than those estimates. With that, that reduces your interest cost by just shy of $900,000 during the repayment. Okay? So why I'm focusing on that so much is the next visual. And this has to do with the multi-year budget planning that, you know, we, we conduct every year. We try to position the district to take advantage of the circumstances you're facing, right? So you recall this, this current biennial or current budget, you levied 12 and a half million for debt repayment. The plan was it, it would go away as operational funding authority turns on, right? And so, so that would help to offset some of that tax impact. With question one not being approved, heading into the 2324, we're still waiting for the biennial budget factors that may influence this. But I wanted to put an illustration up here that one of the choices that you have is to levy the same amount and just pay down the debt a little bit quicker than we were originally estimating. So in the 2324 year, if you keep that debt levy the exact same as it is this year, you can make an extra principal payment in 2024, so where you see that 4,145. Ultimately, once we know more about the biennial budget and the state aid funding and, you know, kind of the planning that you're doing around what next year looks like, by putting some number, I don't know if it will keep 4 million there, but some planning number will help you to pay off even more of this 29 million more quickly. So you then avoid the interest carrying cost for that 20 years. And so just this illustration of 4 million, look what it does to the lower right corner in the total interest cost. So instead of saving just shy of 900,000, in the exact same assumptions, you're saving a little over 3.7 million. So that's why I want to at least introduce that because within your parameter resolution, we have that flexibility to plug an extra principal payment in 2024 so that you can, again, put the district in a better position by paying off more of this long-term debt sooner and reducing the total interest cost. Did I explain that okay? I mean, Did I explain that okay? I mean, it's a lot of moving parts and I'm pointing at a spreadsheet that has small numbers on it, but the biggest concept is, you know, if the biennial budget, once we have an idea of what that's going to do from a state aid perspective, what may come back as the final bond issue is to have a principal payment in '24, which then buys you another year, pay off debt quicker, reduce interest costs, and then you, you know, you're set up for building the 20, 24, 25 budget from there.
Yes, Molly.
I'm sorry, I have a question. So you're saying if the state aid increases, that we will have more money available if we were to keep the levy at the same amount to make that $4 million payment? Is that what you're saying, or am I totally misunderstanding this?
State aid is a factor in what we're going to evaluate, because that fluctuates every year. Really, it, it's a decision of, you, you currently have that payment built into this year's budget, so 22, 23. Do you keep it in 23, 24 and make another large principal payment?
Okay.
So you're avoiding that in the future.
So you're pre, are you prepaying essentially?
It would be paying early, because there would be a maturity there, so I wouldn't necessarily, prepaying is what we're doing on the bond anticipation note.
Okay.
It would be a, an earlier principal payment than what the preliminary plan was.
Okay, I was just really confused about where that was coming from, but.
Yeah, so it's, so it's basically keeping your, if we're able to keep your budget line item for debt repayment the same as you build out the 23, 24 year, that's the primary spot where it would come from.
Thanks.
Other questions, Brian? Go ahead.
So I guess just a quick summary, so 7B, the anticipation notes, that's short-term borrowing.
Right.
And then with 7C, the refunding bonds or refinancing bonds we're using to pay off the short-term debt.
Correct.
The short-term notes.
Correct.
And the bonds will be, the second half of the bonds will be callable. So, you know, depending on what our property values do, things along those lines, we could save even more interest down the road if we choose to pay them off earlier. Same thing with the high school, I think what was the last 10 years are callable versus the first 10.
Yeah, so, so Bonnie and I reviewed that when we were looking at the, the debt schedule for the rating call. You have bonds that are eligible to, from the 20, from previous authorizations, 2016, you have bonds that are eligible to be prepaid as of 23, 24, so right away. And then a portion in '26, and then this portion would be 2031, so eight years. So you, at different points over the next eight years, you have different spots where you could choose to, to make an extra payment if the budget would allow.
On your PowerPoint, you had, the next slide was financing timeline of participants.
Yeah, so this is just a tentative timeline, just to give you an idea of, of the different steps. So we're, we're on the Monday, May 8th, that's the two board action items. That's the 7A and 7B resolutions. We're prepping for the rating conference call, which would be next week. We then later in May get that rating back along with the final review from Tom Griggs, the, the bond counsel, the attorney serving the district on, on the bond issuance. And then we would, the earliest we would be ready to lock in the rates on the bonds would be early June. So I say earliest, because again, based on when, when the joint finance shares some information and how much information and how confident we are in that information, we may continue to kind of wait a week to try and see, you know, how much solid information about the, the biennial budget to factor that into how we finalize the long-term. But in effect, the shortest time we can go and lock in the long-term rate under 7B would be early June.
That's the longest we can, or you say that's early?
That's the earliest, that's the soonest from which we would be back to the president and clerk with final rates and the discussion on, here's, here's the decision points.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On, on these slides that look at the different scenarios for payment, it says it includes a projected 2027 refinancing. I was just wondering what, what that entails.
Yeah, so the final issue from 2017 related to the 2016 referendum, there was a, it was a 10-year promissory note and that 10th year, which was at the time 2027, had a payment that was about 2 million higher than the, the flat scheduled, you know, principal and interest payment. So all along, we've, we've planned to either prepay a portion of that, which may be to, to next point, that it's prepayable as of '24. So we may chip away at it with a prepayment. But I didn't, I wanted to provide for it in here, so I ran a hypothetical refinancing in 2027 so that that's factored in to the, to the total repayment plan.
Okay, and then if the interest rate was lower, you'd refinance the other project as well?
Yes, so you, so you have the choice if rates move back lower on, you know, because right now there, there's not savings related to refinancing the, the 2016, because those rates were very favorable. So it's really this choice of, if you have additional funds to pay down something, what is the best portion of the total debt profile of the school district? Welcome. So the, yeah, so the timeline, you know, we would, the, the bond anticipation note closes on June 5th and that's when it goes into the project account and is available to pay contractors, architects, and then gets reinvested until, till needed. And then we will monitor the budget, the biennial budget and the market and try and balance those two to find the right time in June to bring that back to the president and clerk for finalizing the terms of the bonds. And then the payoff happens on, on September 5th. So Bonnie had asked me this question, so the shortest we would lock in is early June. She said, well, what's the longest? Like if the biennial budget drags out and we want to wait, what's the longest? So we have to pay off on December 5th. So we would, you know, the longest would be like November would be the, but I, I don't foresee us doing that, but just as an FYI.
So it's part of a 90-day window there.
Yeah, correct. So it kind of gives us some flexibility to monitor it and understand what the moving parts are to make that choice of how much to pay off in 2024.
And these, this is typical in these referendum bond approvals to have two motions. And you just explain the basis for the two motions and what's happening in each.
Yeah, so 7A is finalizing the, the rate, like, so we, we have an investor that has agreed to that 4.02. So that's final as of your action tonight. So that's 7A, I believe, is, is that what you said, Rob? Okay, 7A in the agenda. So that's finalizing and locking in that rate as of tonight. 7B is a parameter resolution, which the primary function of that is the board is delegating to the president and clerk to take action at a future date, once the paperwork and the credit rating are all ready to access the market. So that's the, the reason for the two different actions.
So just so everybody understands, the bond anticipation notes would put money in our accounts effective immediately. That money then can be invested. When I say invested, basically it's CDs is about all we can do, but we can start drawing interest on that money. But then the second item is then to actually sell bonds to pay off the notes, because that takes a little bit longer. So it's try to take advantage of as much time as we can to generate a return on, on that money. So first one happens, I mean, we would have money in our account very shortly. The second one is to pay back that money using long-term debt, right?
Correct.
There's nothing in the language in these resolutions, though, that commits us to any kind of that early principal payment or that we, that you were describing earlier.
No, that'll be a discussion as we get closer to it. It, you, the language, the parameter, some of the parameter language is around how much the principal amount in each of the years are. And we put flexibility to have that go to zero in 2024 or higher than the 4 million. I think it was a, a fluctuation of about 4 million. So we have room to maneuver on that specific portion and then equivalent adjustments in 2037 to 2043.
So it's, I guess my question was, it's a range rather than a specific commitment to find out some.
Correct.
Right, so then we would, at this time, unless there's other questions, we would entertain a motion using the language in the title for the resolution and then just indicate as written and recommended. And we'd need B before, before C, just to, with two different votes on this.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of $29 million bond anticipation notes as presented in Agenda Item 7B.
Okay, very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Heather, a second by Bob. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and that resolution is approved. And now entertain a motion on the second resolution by Action Item 7C.
Mr. President?
Rob?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $29 million general obligation refunding bonds as noted.
Second.
All right, motion by Rob, second by Molly. Any further questions or comments regarding resolution number two? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and resolution for the refunding bonds is approved. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks, Brian.
Guess we'll be in touch, huh?
All right, yes. Work, work still to be done, but yes.
Yes. Kate's first order, business will be signing a $29 million mortgage. So let's, that's always fun as the clerk, so.
Right, thanks a lot for your work, appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, next up, the high school student handbook for the 23, 24 school year.
So these are the same handbooks that you saw during the work sessions, both the high school, middle school and the Activity Code of Conduct. Administration's recommendation continues to approve as presented.
Questions of Nick, otherwise I entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Bob, second by Molly. Any further questions, comments regarding the high school yearbook, handbook?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would just would like to recall the conversation we had during work session about the work that administration is doing to kind of better streamline these and make them more useful and more clear tools for our students and families. So appreciate knowing that that is in the works as we move to approve these as presented, given the timeline that we're on for, for this year.
Yes, they will look different for '24, '25. All right, any further comments? Otherwise, I believe we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor of approving the high school student handbook as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Next up is the middle school student handbook.
Same recommendation as the high school, this is the same handbook that you saw at the work session.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Heather, second by Kate. Same comment that Heather made would apply to this one as well, it's going to be revamped and streamlined and so forth. User-friendly, I think, the, the idea is that this is going to be more of a digital format or platform compared to 10 years ago when we were doing these on paper, so. Right? Is there a motion to approve that? We just did, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. All right, the middle school handbook, how about the Activities Code of Conduct?
Again, Activity Code of Conduct is the same book that you saw on the work session. Administration's recommendation would be to approve as presented.
Right, motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Bob. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Next up is sanctioning of lacrosse as sport or, that's in the school district. Particularly a varsity sport with a JV component, correct?
And I think what you can see on here is you have a memo that was written by Bonnie Stegman to the administration and kind of breaks it down. One of the directives that was given was, how can we do this in a budget-neutral manner? It is, is an interesting situation, because as we talked about the why now, and that's the last paragraph at the bottom, but really the why now is the fact that if we don't sanction, it will effectively eliminate the ability for our kids to continue to play sport even at the club level, because all of the teams that were currently playing have sanctioned it in the way the WIA, and I don't, I'm not sure what the Minnesota Athletic Association is called, but basically have said, if you're a sanctioned sport or a sanctioned school team, you cannot play a club team. And so that would leave essentially about 85 to 90 kids that we have not able to, not able to continue to participate at the high school level. As you can see, the budgets are laid out. Both Bonnie and Aaron did a nice job putting this together. There is some revenue that we would anticipate between the ticket sales, student fees related to the sport. Does it show that that helps bring the cost down? But then within the athletic department, the thought was to continue to get this, the cost down to zero, it's got to be a net zero as we looked at it. So one is to reduce charter bus travel, any trips under 120 miles. That saves us about $21,000, $22,000 a year. We did talk about increasing student fees, you can see what that generates. We are, you know, just to give you some perspective, I think the conference average student fees being charged is right around $125 a sport. So just to give you some perspective as we, as we look at that, so we're still well under, I think, where the conference average is, but I think the highest school in the conference being the Eau Claire schools are charged the most. We do have things built into the, the, what is it, the registration program, the My School Bucks, where if people qualify for free reduced lunch waivers, they can check that box at the beginning of the year. We'll apply that so that, you know, the fee would be waived for them. They wouldn't have to actually go out separately and, and do those types of things. And then the other piece that generates is moving our uniform replacements and moving those out of the athletic budgets and moving those to areas that are paid with advertising dollars currently, and I think those are all sold. Is that right, Aaron?
Three or four.
Three or four are sold right now. So it covers, so essentially the net cost of the district would be $0.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob?
Just a couple of quick questions, as it relates to the summary of budget adjustments. We talk about the charter bus travel of only 120 miles and over, is that round trip or one-way?
One-way.
Okay. And then the uniform replacement, the budget, the $11,812, that's an annual sum?
The rotation, and it's not, not related to just the sport, it's all the sports in general go on a rotation. So it'd be shifting that over to this advertising budget revenue.
Okay, and then what do we spend on uniform replacement today, just out of curiosity?
Anywhere from $20,000 to $25,000 a year.
Okay, so the difference would come from the existing budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and just to be clear, the motion would be just to sanction lacrosse as a sport. We're not at this time proving any increase in the athletic fee, although that would be a separate motion sometime.
Mr. President? Man, okay, I'd like to move that we sanction the lacrosse.
Well, I'm asking a question, so I'd like to answer it first.
I guess what I would tell you is, we can absolutely bring it up as a separate motion or you can approve it as presented, which, in which case would show that it's a fee increase of $25 to all sports. So either way, you can, I mean, I think it'd be better if you can just approve it as presented, which is the $25 goes up. So then as we get ready to register and do all those different components, we're not having to bring it back to you guys again, since we already talked about it at the work session.
And that's fair, it's just that with this budget up there, then. And that's fair. It's just that with this budget up there, then it said student fees and it was estimated at 75. So if we're making it 100, that would actually be another $2,200.
For what's it?
Well, under the line that says student fees for revenue.
If you go down with the 25, we include the additional.
I see.
Yep.
So that's $25 from all the other students, including.
Including lacrosse.
Lacrosse. All right, got it.
Yep.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. Now, Rob.
Mr. President, I just have a quick question. So I understand that kids who have free and reduced lunch can check a box. But I do want to address kids that are maybe in the middle where you don't qualify for that, but they might still need help in order to play a sport. So how would they utilize some help through the school or the boosters?
Yeah, absolutely. So Aaron, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, two things really tremendous groups in terms of.
Can you come up to the microphone just because we're being recorded?
Your voice is commanding.
I haven't coached in a couple of years, so it's kind of dwindling a little bit. But we have two main supports where our school system within our building, council and office conversations in our in our admin office and being able to identify those can come in all different kinds of directions and how you were able to identify something like that. The other thing is our clubs, our booster groups do a tremendous job trying to support in our knowledgeable on a on a closer level to those individuals. One thing we're continually working on, though, is just trying to identify needs. And those extra wants are typically what create those challenges. So we're always trying to have conversations with coaches and parent groups to try and keep this high school and and try and eliminate and reduce those extra wants that can create a tough situation for a family or student that's trying to just participate in whatever sport might be.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions while Aaron's up? All right.
I was wondering if you feel like students feel comfortable approaching the coaches generally or like how does that go for students or or do you find out through the grapevine that students don't have the funds to help participate in the sports?
In my experience, I don't know that there's many people that would say they're comfortable and nobody likes to do that. But that's exactly what you mentioned, how we typically find out through those relationships and coaches identifying. For example, somebody didn't show up with the correct shoes and trying to make sure we get those those shoes for that individual. Oftentimes, it's kind of at that close level where we're able to establish those relationships and identify those needs.
Thank you.
All right, anything further for that? All right. You can sit down again. All right. Now, Rob, did you want to be able to make the motion in light of Nick's answer to my question?
Sure. Okay. So I move to approve the sanctioning of the Hudson School District lacrosse program.
Second.
And? And?
And?
And the increase of the.
And the increase of the activity fee to $25.
Or no, it's increasing 25 to $100, right?
From 25 to $100.
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have our motion and our second. Is there any further discussion? Heather's. Right? Heather.
So I'm in favor of approving this recommendation and the bit of cognitive dissonance I'm having right now. So maybe it just, if we call it out, is there there could be some folks who are scratching their heads going, we just heard a bunch of students and parents talk passionately about not making cuts to our band program at the same time that we are adding expenses for a sport. And in my mind, it's because it's driven by student interest and student participation. But anything else that, you know, either Nick or others might say to kind of help sort this out for folks who might be wondering as they're watching or hearing this kind of, but how can you amend?
Yeah, I mean, this is driven by this is driven by student interest, student numbers. And and as I was saying earlier, we have not been cutting the budget per se. And we haven't done anything along that. What we've done is we've made adjustments to our staffing levels based on student interest. And it doesn't matter whether it's with activities, whether it's with fine arts, whether it's with elective courses. Also, as you see at the elementaries and middle school, just sheer number of students. This is not an increased cost for us because that was the bottom line that it had to be able to be it had to be able to come in without additional Fund 10 funding to make this work. So in order to make this work, it is other pro, you know, it's it's going to be other programs that are also going to feel some of the crunch because if they're used to riding the charter bus to Bryce Lake, for example, as they've been, they will no longer be doing that. They'll be riding yellow bus. But and and that's fine. So it's it's trying to find that find that balance. You know, the difference with, you know, as it relates to music and and that's not the extracurricular piece, that's the curricular piece of it. It's it really is driven by student numbers. Music is down, instrumental music at the high school is down about 25%. It's a reduction of about 16% of our staff at the high school. So same type of alignment. We do the same thing with athletics. If all of a sudden we don't have very many kids out for a sport, they don't have as many coaches, you know, things get shrunk down. So that has to it has to drive some of those pieces. Yep.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just to follow up, I think I I myself was a nerdy band kid and always felt that, you know, athletics got more attention. So I think it was great to see tonight highlighted all the other programs we have at our schools that that are that it's not just athletics that are available for our students. There's such a breadth and depth. But I wonder as we we found a creative solution for to bring in lacrosse, I, you know, I just think it'll be important to think about what is what is it looking like in terms of band enrollment? I'm not sure for younger kids and in middle school, and if we expect to see growth. I'd hate to lose what we have in our music programs. I understand when cuts need to be made because of enrollment, but just that we're proactively watching that.
Absolutely.
Any other further questions or comments? All right, otherwise.
I'll just say that, you know, I'm a big supporter of of equal opportunities in our extracurricular curriculums and sports and and, you know, band music. And I think we have a lot to be proud of. And we did see tonight, we saw a lot of greater participation in in these things. And that's what I think drives lacrosse, what makes it so you want to support it, is is the association's involvement and drive and commitment. And and just that equal number of boys and girls coming up through it. It's it's just I think it's where it's where we want to we want to support that. And and being at, I agree with what you're saying, Megan, about we were created for this, could we be created for that? But or for for a marching band? But that is a it is a question about numbers. You have to show the numbers. And I'd be the first to say, you know, let's look at this again. Let's look at the numbers again. And I'm sure I'm sure administration does. So.
Yeah, I think, you know, with the numbers, it's really the numbers warrant adding this. And it's the same thing with music program. If all of a sudden we start seeing uptick in kids in band, we're going to add more music. And and we're going, we're going to do those things. It's just like if we see an uptick in elementary age kids, we're going to add more elementary sections. But the one thing that is really, really challenging for us is when we start talking about curricular programs, and this is kind of digress off of it, is as we look at our changing enrollment, it it's going to be impossible for us to constantly get creative with with different departments. It really is going to be that student numbers that are going to drive it. And we would we would hope that over the next few years, those band numbers come back up and and we'd be able to continue to potentially add additional staff. We have added music at the elementaries and we've done a ton of those. We almost what doubled the amount of time in elementary music in the last, you know, six years. So everything is, you know, we are pushing, trying to do that. But for this, this is the lacrosse decision and really the ability to do this budget neutral is what makes us reasonable to do at this point.
Mr. President, one more thing on that. I remember when my kids were in elementary school and Bobby Palmaville started the strings program. And it was, they had to make a big push to get support for for its support for that. And, you know, I was at North Hudson Elementary. They had 70 kids up on stage with violins and it sounded horrible. You know, all those parents were just, you know, going, what did we get ourselves into here? But that that boost 17, 16 years ago drove that program and its involvement and it's coming through. And and so that created a bump, which is, I think, also part of that a little bit. So but definitely a supporter of music and will continue to be.
Right. Question is to sanction the lacrosse program and raise the student participation fee. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and lacrosse is sanctioned. The next up is the second reading of teaching and learning policies, part six.
So these are the, oh, that was really loud.
These are the same policies we've discussed a few times, second reading now. We'll have one set coming forward, but no changes from last time after we made the adjustments after the first initial reading.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the second reading of the teaching and learning policies, part six, indicate aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and we it is approved. Next up, second reading of fiscal services policies, series 600. I guess. Just the title. All right. Thank you for pointing that out. All right. So was there a motion to approve the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Molly, second by Rob. For the comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the 600 series second reading is approved. Next up, 700, support services. Aaron?
Um, there are no changes to what you had viewed previously.
Okay.
Move to approve.
All right. A motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the second reading of the 700 series approved. Next up, we have the 2324 Board of Education meeting schedule.
This is the schedule that you guys talked about, agreed to during the work session. So it'd just be a formality to approve it. However, I will say that I know, you know, Jamie has talked about wanting to get a board retreat in. But early summer is probably not looking the greatest, but I don't know if we want to at the next work session be ready to talk about potentially August or September. Is that what you were thinking, Jamie?
Yeah, I mean, I think just everyone be prepared. Our next work session, I think Kate, you indicate you wouldn't be able to make, right? But if we could still get some dates of when we're thinking about a three hourish time period where it'd be Nick and the seven board members, we really do want 100% participation. So it's a little bit like a Rubik's Cube getting that scheduled.
I just could throw it out. We're not there.
Yeah. Yeah, you think you make it somewhere more brief, but but no, we're so this meeting schedule for the 2324, and it takes us through the meetings in in May of '24, just shortened up by the, we'll have called them hyphenated or slash meetings, in which it's part work session, part action meeting for the summertime. But going way back to before next time, I remember where we would not have any meeting in July. So this is not that different from prior years.
And so question, this this does take into consideration concerts and other known potential conflicts?
Right. Yeah, we got like the spring break that caused moving of the March, the early March meeting moved up a week. And.
Home for the holidays is 10th and 11th, so we would just suggest to the board that you go on the 10th. And we would make sure that you could have tickets for the 10th, which is Sunday. The Pops concert is on the 26th, it's a Tuesday. And then it takes into account the edge conventions and all of those different pieces. So.
Put me down for two tickets for that that December 10th.
All right, we'll follow up with you.
All right. Is there a motion to?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, Heather got it before you, Molly. All right, motion by Rob. Any further comments, questions? Otherwise, this sets the meeting date. And I should throw the caveat out there that we always reserve the right to, you know, when we, as we get into the school year, we've had situations happen where we've had to adjourn something by one day or something. But otherwise, we want to try and give as much of a heads up, especially those action meetings for our public so that they can rely on that. All those in favor of approving the schedule then, as discussed previously and as printed before us now, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next up, this is advocacy letter to Representative Zimmerman. I want to thank our newest member, Megan Rosowski, for drafting the letter. Did an excellent job. She had originally asked me, is it okay for me to write a letter to Shannon Zimmerman, you know, on a personal level? And of course, we're all encouraged to do that. That's one of the things that WASB encourages board members to do is engage in advocacy. But in order for it to have the clout of coming from the board, we need to have board action, not individual members. But I hope all of you have been talking to Representative Zimmerman. I've seen him a couple of times now in the last couple of months and I put my own personal two cents in. But is there any, Megan, any comment lead into this letter here? I think it's pretty straightforward, but go ahead.
Yeah, I I looked at what had already been struck from the governor's budget and left some of that out and focused on what hadn't been struck the which so then it sounds like the Joint Committee on Finance is looking at these issues still, maybe, possibly, who knows?
I like your realism in your letter rather than asking for double what the governor had originally. Any other questions or comments on this letter? Again, I think it's something that strikes the right balance between gratefulness for his efforts. He does hold a pretty high position in that joint committee in finance. And he has been you know, an advocate for education. Just hope that that continues.
Ms. President, just, you know, Megan, to echo what Jamie said, very well written, well done. And I'll move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve the sending of this letter. We would, we could date it as early as tomorrow. So maybe Kate, you'll be able to, I guess, we're all signing this one. So we have our signatures. We'll get that printed. All of us get to sign it rather than a clerk or president only. But all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The letter is approved. Thank you, Megan. All right, next up, I will entertain a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to the language in the agenda. Heather.
Move to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 parent one parenting sheet to confer with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kate recalls for a roll call vote. Bauman? Brown?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Rosowski?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. The ayes have it. We are now in closed session.